Okay, we are live also on YouTube, but we're, we'll be starting the meeting shortly. Are you kidding me?
Hello?
Okay. Can, so we are, we do have a quorum, so.
Yes.
Did I just hear?
State, but yeah, but I don't see him.
See me now?
I can see you now.
Okay, all right, thank you everyone for joining on May 5th meeting, we'll call the meeting to order.
Can't hear Kelly.
You can't hear me? Can you guys hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, all right, sorry. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the home news Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118, and BIOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, 2020. The Board will meet to officially act upon adoption of the 2021 school year budget and take formal action to award a contract under an RFP for staffing services. Mr. Mara?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that active recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered a private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavours any future use.
Okay, all right, roll call please.
Burns?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
DeCaro?
Here, sorry.
DePrima?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Giordano?
Lent?
Here.
Solakowski? Ellis Foster?
Here.
Form exists?
All right, if we can stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag. The United States of America.
Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands. One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
You know, I'd ask everybody, even though it's really not on our agenda, to please stand for a moment. So we could just recognize those who are working are essential services, both in the district, outside the district, those who are stricken through this illness, and those in our community we've lost. Thank everyone. Thank you. I'm gonna stop right now. I just want to let everyone know there is going to be a slight change or just a clarification on the agenda. As it shows, we do have two items that we're reviewing. What we are going to do is, Mr. Mara, we're gonna hand over, we're going to have the discussion and the presentation on the budget, and then we will open public comment for the discussion on the budget only. After that, if we vote on the budget, when we move on to the next agenda item, we will have, at that point, Dr. Hook will share a little information, and then we will open up to the public again at that point specifically for the staffing item. So we'll keep the two discussions separately so that we can have enough discussion on both and give everybody an opportunity to ask the questions that they want. So at this point, Mr. Mara, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen with everyone, so you just confirm when you get my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So welcome to the public hearing to adopt the 2020, to 2020, there's 2021 budget for the Old Bridge Township School District. The outline for tonight's meeting is as follows. By name, I will introduce the Board members and the administrative team. Mr. Cittadino and Dr. Hoker will discuss student activities, district accomplishments, and budget priorities. I will discuss appropriations, revenues, and taxes, and Mr. Cittadino will do a final summary. At that point, we will open the meeting for public comment on the budget. So first, introduce the members of the Board. Ms. Kelly Ellis Foster is the President of the Board. Ms. Jill DeCaro is Vice President. Ms. Teresa Burns. Ms. Jill Kelly. Mr. Salvatore DePrima.
Good evening.
Mr. Richard Dunn. Mr. Salvatore Giordano. Ms. Lisa Lent. And Mr. Matthew Solakowski. From administration, the superintendent, Mr. David Cittadino. The assistant superintendent, Dr. Kathy Hoker. And the business administrator and Board Secretary, Joseph Mara, that's me. At this point, I will move the presentation over to Mr. Cittadino, and Mr. Cittadino, when you want me to switch the slides, just give me, just let me know, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Thank you, Board. Thank you to our public that are here this evening. Putting together a school budget is our, one of our greatest responsibilities because it allows us to provide for the programs that are so important to our students. This year, we highlighted the beginning of the, as we always do with our budget presentation, with some snapshots of our students and some of the activities that they do in and around the school, obviously during happier times in our schools, when we can have our students with us. We students, we see students using physical activity in our gymnasiums, coming together of assemblies, having outdoor events, and celebrating our community at Olbridge Day. The picture in the middle is something that Dr. Hook and I have become very proud of. It is our lunch with the superintendents where various students from the elementary schools, two from each elementary school, twice a year are invited to come have lunch with us and talk about ways in which we can better serve them as students. Mr. Mara? Our high school students are the culminating product of all the years of education, our schools, when they start with us in pre-K and move through our elementary schools, middle school to high school, and they undoubtedly are a very great source of pride for us. Mr. Mara? Our students take pride in participating in academics, athletics, and the arts, and we have a very storied and rich history of excellence in all of these areas. Mr. Mara? This is a new slide we're adding this year because our hearts are truly broken for the class of 2020 and many of the milestone events that they are missing at this time. But I assure everyone who is listening today that we continue to work for, looking for ways that may be different and may be creative to celebrate our students and give them the recognition that they truly deserve. Mr. Mara? Dr. Hoker?
Good evening. It's my pleasure to share with you tonight some of the district's accomplishments from 2019, 2020. The Old Bridge School District updated our pandemic plan and had it available in one week's time. The district launched the Remote Learning Plan within three days. We adopted the Remote Learning Plan with a Phase Two that incorporated virtual supports. We distributed over 500 devices to students in need. Partnership with Sodexo Transportation Maintenance and Aramark Representatives, we delivered over 5,000 meals to student families, and we continue to do that on a daily basis. The district has been a central resource of supplies for township essential workers and local medical professionals fighting COVID-19. The district currently has 38 Promising Practice National Recognition Awards. This year, we have six additional promising practices under review. Five of our schools and the district were recertified as state and district schools of character, and they are under review for national status, which we should be hearing by May 15th. Three schools were recognized as future-ready New Jersey schools. Seven educators were named Microsoft Innovative Experts for 2019, 2020. Continued partnership with Microsoft, which provides us professional development at no extra cost. More than 40 workshop offerings were presented during each of our in-service days by our own in-district experts, and group therapy was offered in school for at-risk students in place of suspensions. During the 1920 school year, initial implementation of person-centered approach for students in transition, known as PCAST, through the Department of Special Services. The implementation of IXL as benchmarking tool for all English and math resource pull-out and LLD classes K through 12. There was training for all secondary special education teachers on SMART goals and the incorporation of DRA scores. Project Read Training on written expression and linguistic strands to middle school special education English teachers, and Project Read Phonology and Framing Your Thoughts. Implementation of standardized data collection and graphing procedures in the secondary ABA and multiple disabled programs. Effective School Solutions Program at the GNC and Old Bridge High School filled to support the maximum number of students. Family counselling services are provided to all students in the program, and the expansion of the ABA program at the high school level. Additional in-class resource course offerings were offered at the high school and in grade four, we now offer K through four. Additional full-day preschool disabled classroom at Glenn School began in January due to increased enrollment. We continued the use of the Brigance III IED curriculum-based measurement to assess progress in preschool disabled classrooms. We integrated all elementary self-contained classrooms into the general education-related arts to promote inclusion throughout the district. We trained IXL trainers throughout the district to turnkey training, provide coaching, and continue professional development for staff. And created a task force of special educators to provide professional development and coaching on modifying assessments within the Envisions mathematics platform. The English Language Learners, an immigrant student parent forum, and after-school enrichment program resulted in growth and improved academic success for these learners. The IXL program was integrated into English Language Learner classrooms. Our ELL students worked, our high school ELL students worked, I'm sorry, the ELL students worked, and Old Bridge Public Library adult students worked collaboratively with the peer learning program. Our study abroad programs, although modified, and exchange programs in Germany, France, Italy, and China are ongoing, and we will continue to look into how we can incorporate those opportunities in the future. First, the First Annual Joint World Language Junior Honor Society induction, recognizing over 200 middle school students' achievements in Mandarin, French, German, Italian, and Spanish. We were awarded the Confucius Classroom Scholarship for the eighth year. The largest seal of biliteracy 12th grade participation in all five languages. The World Language Peer-to-Peer Old Bridge High School and Elementary Program was launched. That's world language lessons developed and delivered by Old Bridge High School World Language Honor Society students to kindergarten through second-grade students at the elementary level. The ePortfolio training for world language staff with the ACTFL Authentic Assessment Component. Our marching nights were invited to perform at the World Class Events International, at World Class Events Internationally. The Old Bridge High School Marching Nights awarded first-place New Jersey state champions and second-place national champions. Indoor percussion awarded first-place Mid-Atlantic Champion Shows, second-place World International Regional Event in Trumbull, Connecticut. District Competitive Percussion Ensemble now inclusive of grades five through 12. District-wide Arts Fest showcasing over 500 student-made artworks and over 800 student performers. This was the largest Arts Fest to date. Creation of a new professional development program, which was a collaborative effort with professional musicians for annual staff training. And the introduction of Quaver Music, which was a K-5 interactive music learning software program impacting over 3,300 students. Mr. Mara? And now for our athletics. And these accomplishments that I'm going over in this slide are from the spring of 2019. And normally, we are, they're not included in this part of the program because they take place after this event. So these are from last year in May. The girls' lacrosse, red division champions. Boys' lacrosse were sportsmanship award winner in the red division. Boys volleyball, red division champions. GMC Conference Champions. Central Jersey Champions. State Champions. And all championships are in back-to-back years. The baseball, red division champions, GMC Champions, and most wins in school history. And this year, for 2019, 20, the fall and winter seasons, cheerleading, performance and routine GMC Champions. New Jersey State Champions in Large Varsity Division. Second place in the state in the game day division. Football, red division champions, finished the regular season 8-0, first time in school history. Gymnastics, North Two Sectional Champions, first time in school history. Boys' cross-country, red division and conference champions, finished as seventh-best team in the state. And girls' swimming, red division and conference champions, first time in school history. Mr. Cittadino, do you want to do this slide, or would you like me to continue?
No, I will take over right there, you did a great job.
All right, thank you.
So the priorities for the 2020, 21 budget are as follows, and this we've highlighted because at no other time has this been more obvious and more pressing, that as we build a blueprint for what the school district should look like in 2020, 21, with so many questions as to the impact of COVID-19, and it has direct effect on how we provide instruction to our students. The budget must be there, but the means to identify how we will educate our students. Again, with these challenges, some things may change. At this point, we have to have plans in place for A, B, C, and D options. But most of all, the biggest priority is that children will learn in a safe and healthy environment, and that's always our top priority. Our remote learning platform.
Sorry about the dog.
That's all right, I'm glad the dog supports that endeavor, that's very important. To expand our remote learning platform as needed with equipment, software, and professional development. To maintain successful programs while continuing to deal with the S2 fiscal realities. Continue to expand on and offer clinical therapeutic support for our at-risk students. And we anticipate with everything that's gone on, and our at-risk students, our neediest populations, will experience more needs going forward in 2020, 21. And we plan to meet, you went all the way for me, but meet the educational, emotional, and fiscal needs of all students, regardless of abilities. Thank you very much. Mr. Mara?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cittadino. Expense appropriations. On this slide, I've summarized the budget into seven categories. Overall, the district is budgeting a 1.0%, a 1.06% increase in spending, and the majority of that increase is generated by capital outlay projects. The first line item is program costs. It represents about 52% of the district cost, or $79 million in next year's budget. It includes regular education programs, special education programs, academic support, bilingual programs, co-curricular programs, alternative programs in the high school. And we have a very robust special ed program in the district. Some of the programs that we have are learning disabilities programs, behavioral disabilities program, a multiple disabled program. We have a resource center program. We have an autism program. A preschool disabled program for half-day students, and a preschool disabled program for full-day students. To support all of these programs, we have the following district-wide services. Attendance services, health services, which are our nurses, speech services, extraordinary services for students with special needs. We have guidance services. We have a massive child study team. We provide improvement instructions through our supervisors. We have an educational media services center. And we have instructional staff training, which is professional development for all teachers. And that is our program cost, they are our program costs. The employee benefit line, which is 20.5% of the entire budget, contains costs for health, prescription, dental, vision coverage, workers' comp insurance, pension cost, payroll taxes, and other employee benefits. The projected decrease is 5.9%, and is principally due to negotiated renewals, with no increase for prescription and dental premiums, and estimated cost decreases in premiums for medical insurance, workers' comp, and pension contributions. The maintenance and operation line, which is 11% of the budget, contains costs for all the required maintenance that is necessary in the district. Snow removal, custodial services, security, and energy costs. Transportation, which is about 6% of the budget, contains costs for salaries to operate a fleet of about 50 buses. Contracted services, or outside vendors that provide daily busing for our students. And for your information, we transport approximately 10,000 students daily to and from school. It also safely, and we're among the safest in the state. It also includes fuel cost, maintenance of all the buses, of the 50 buses, and the administration of the entire operation. The administrative cost line, which is about 6% of the budget, contains the cost of the staffing of the main offices of all schools, that is, the school principals and their secretaries, the superintendent's office, the business office, and district-wide technology. The tuition cost line, which is about 3% of the budget, contains costs for tuition of outer district private placements and tuition for students that attend vocational schools. The capital outlay line is about 1.4% of the budget and contains costs for 2021 for technology and equipment and facilities upgrades. The capital outlay projects that are planned for 2021 are as follows. We will be upgrading the entire PA system in Sandberg. We will be replacing the boilers in Cooper. We will be doing sidewalk and curb replacements at various schools. And we will be doing technology, the ongoing technology, infrastructure upgrades, which are mandatory to keep our internet and network working, and we will be looking to purchase three buses. The next, the last two items on that page, SDA assessment and also capital reserve are mandated amounts that the state requires us to include in the budget. The first line, SDA assessment is for any district that did a referendum in the last 20 years, is an annual assessment. It hasn't changed in the last seven years of $159,432, and the capital reserve transfer is just interest that is due to the capital reserve account, which is one of our reserve accounts.
Mr. Mara, I just want to add in that the, at Carl Sandberg, the public address system is not just upgrading it, it's basically replacing a system that is not functioning safely to meet the needs of the school to operate safely.
That's correct, it's not, you're correct, we will be replacing the entire system with a state-of-the-art, cutting-edge PA system. Okay, the next slide is just another way to present how we spend the district's funds, the taxpayers' funds, and you can see 52% of all of the expenditures are for programmatic costs, 21% of employee benefits, and maintenance and transportation is about 17%. That's 90% of the district operations. This year, there are some unusual and notable items that I need to point out with this budget. First of all, in the environment, in the S2 environment that we find ourselves in, we've been able to maintain all the existing programs for 2021. As I mentioned before, the prescription and dental premiums remain unchanged in 2021. Medical benefit premiums, rate reduction of 3.9% on January 1st, 2020, has resulted in a significant savings for 2021. The maintenance costs are significantly reduced as a result of the full implementation of the ESIP program, the Energy Savings Improvement Plan. That was a three-year plan that is finally complete. And the capital outlay projects are in, a capital outlay project increases. This year, last year, we did very little because of the budget crisis, but as I already mentioned, the PA system, boiler replacement, and curb renovations, district-wide, et cetera. And there are also mandatory changes as per state mandates for curriculum in next year's budget. On the revenue side, the unusual items, first and foremost, is that we, our state aid was reduced in 2021 by $3,867,493. Our state aid will continue to decrease, and next year, we expect the decrease to be in a range of 5.5 million. Second item, we've increased our budget for extraordinary aid. In the last 10 years or so, extraordinary aid has never been guaranteed, so the guidance has always been to budget approximately 50% of what we thought the extraordinary aid should be. However, the state has advised us as one of the solutions to the decrease in the state aid to increase our extraordinary aid to what we expect it to be. This will help us in the 2021 budget, but it may hurt us in the 2122 budget. We're using $3,768,563 in reserves. Mandated reserves or restricted reserves are being utilized. These reserves are a result of prior year unbudgeted revenue received and unspent appropriations that exceeded the allowable 2% reserves of the district's annual expenditures. We will be using in next year's budget, $1,475,000 from capital reserve, $450,000 from maintenance reserve, and, I'm sorry, $450,000 from maintenance reserve and emergency reserve. The emergency reserve funding will be used to upgrade our alarm systems. And the good news for this budget, the one piece that is good news, is that we were able to lease the Cheesecake School to Sayoville for $500,000 a year. In terms of the district's status with bank cap or automatic cap adjustments, we have no bank cap and we have no, and we have no automatic cap adjustments, and we will not have for the foreseeable future. General fund revenue. The first item on the general fund review page is called budgeted fund balance. When a district approves its budget, the budget is a tool to manage the district's finances, and it contains numerous estimates of revenue and expenditures. If the revenues received exceed the revenues budgeted, that excess revenue goes into fund balance. If the actual expenses paid are less than the expenses that were appropriated, that unspent appropriation also goes into fund balance. The district may only maintain 2% of the previous year's expenditures in this fund, in this fund balance called unrestricted fund balance. Anything over that amount has to be transferred by board resolution in June of each year either to capital reserve, maintenance reserve, or emergency reserve. And if it's not transferred to one of those reserve accounts, it is used to be returned to the taxpayer in a form of taxpayer relief called budgeted fund balance, a revenue item. So this is cash from prior year budgets that's being used to fund the 2021 budget. The reserve withdrawal line represents withdrawals from the restricted reserve accounts to fund this year's projects, capital, maintenance, and emergency reserve. The local tax levy line. And this proposed budget contains a 2% increase. And I just want to point out here that under current state law, our district, which is one of the S2 districts that is losing money over a six-year period, we are required by statute to increase the tax levy by 2% each year. I cannot submit the budget without a 2% tax levy increase to the taxpayer each year. The state aid line, as I've already discussed, has decreased by 9% or $3,867,493. The state has and will continue to drastically reduce our state aid for the foreseeable future. And as I said, also, next year, we expect that number to be decreased by 5.5 million. The other state aid line is extraordinary aid received for special needs students. This aid is not guaranteed. However, the state guidance recommends that S2 districts that are losing state aid use this increase to cover the reduction of other state aid. And other revenue. In this line is anything that cannot be categorized in any of the above categories. Examples are lease income, interest income, facilities fees, cell tower revenue, tuition revenue, and refunds of purchases from prior years. The significant increase here is a result of the Cheesecake School leased to the Sayoville Board of Education. But overall, we're just increasing the budget by 1.06%. The 2021 tax rate calculation. There are really three points to bring up here. The ratables in the township for the fifth consecutive year increased by $21,891,919 from the prior year. The local tax levy will increase by the 2% as mandated by the state statute to support the proposed budget. And the cost to the average homeowner with an assessed value of $152,500 is $60.83 per year or $5.07 per month. So once this budget is approved, a user-friendly budget, and this presentation will be posted on the district website shortly thereafter. Thank you very much for your attention and your patience, and now I will hand over to Mr. Sodino. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In summary of this budget, the proposed budget for the 2021 school year supports all educational programs despite continued reductions in state aid. It provides funding to ensure all curriculum and resources are aligned with all state standards and executive orders, supports the community-driven Mission 2022 strategic plan, maintains technology that is necessary to support the changing landscape of student learning, provides academic and social and emotional support mechanisms for all learners regardless of their talents and abilities. And the budget reflects the mandatory requirements of S2 legislation and increased locally generated revenue streams. I want to thank everyone on my team and everyone within the board who made this budget come together and work with us to provide a budget that not only met the legislative requirements but is responsible and works as best as we can to support the needs of our students. I say with caution, we know that the revenue generated by the state has been taking a big hit during COVID-19. And it's with hopeful optimism that this budget and state aid will remain the same as we move through into the summer after the budget is adopted. And I hope we do not see a repeat of past years when we lose more state aid going into, in the summer, when there's nothing else we can do about it. But that is a questionary tale we have no control over at this time. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so Ms. Alice Foster, so I'm just going to stop sharing my screen now.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, so can I just, just want to make one note so you know that Mr. Giordano did join the meeting. So if we can make sure that the the record notes that.
Do we have the time that he joined the meeting?
I did not.
Okay, all right, we're good.
So now we're going to open up to the public. The way we're going to get questions from the public is using the chat. So if you have any questions on the budget, you can just please put them in the chat. We'll just read them off and answer all your questions. So I see the first, we do have a question from Tim O'Neill, who's the president of the OBEA. His question is, "All programs are being maintained, but are faculty or staff positions being eliminated in this budget? If so, what positions?" I don't know if Mr. Mayor or Dr. Hoker, if you want to take that, or Mr. Sodino.
I will just say that the budget allows us to maintain our programs, but as we do on an annual basis, we look at enrollment, we look at student needs, we look at needs generated by IEPs, and we address those as needed. So if we have an excess in one particular certified area that is no longer needed because of reduction in sections at a certain grade level, then that might mean that we would reduce a position there. But we could be adding positions in other areas as needs become necessary, depending, again, on student programs and age and certifications. So while all programs are being maintained, we anticipate very little shift and change in personnel, but there might maybe some changes. At this point, we wouldn't say what they are yet because we are still not sure of what the programs are at this time. And as we look forward at, looking into the 2021 school year, there are a lot of unknowns. If it's going to take place in a traditional format or if it's not going to take place in a totally traditional format and absent of a vaccine, what staff members may be impacted and decide that they have health concerns that may not have them coming back at this time. So there are very many unknowns at this time and uncertainties that I would say, you know, pinpoint which position or a position that's being eliminated.
Okay, I don't know if there is a follow-up to that or if anybody else would like to add anything into the chat, any other questions? Okay, again, a tack-on from Mr. O'Neill is, I don't know if Mr. Mayor would have this information available now, but it can be the $21 million ratable be converted into a percentage increase over last year because that seems like a large amount. Increase, a large amount.
I would have to, I would have to respond, I would have to email response to that question to, to the board and also to Mr. O'Neill. I don't have that readily available.
Okay, we can get that, we'll get that for you then and send that to Mr. O'Neill. Anyone else in the public have any questions on the budget? Or any of the presentation? Give it one more, one more moment because then we can go on. And if I don't see any other questions, which I do not see any other questions or chat, what I will do then is we will close the public portion on the budget. And now I will open it up to members of the board. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the budget? You can just unmute yourselves.
Madam President, Rich Dunn. And I just want to sincerely thank the administration, Mr. Sodino, Dr. Hoker, and Mr. Mayor for putting together a budget that works for this district. We all know the situation that we're under with the cut in state aid. So this is a fair deal to the taxpayer and also to our students at the same time. And we are blessed to be able to preserve all our programs at the same time. So I would definitely support this budget. I think it's fair and equitable for everyone. And it just proves that this district can do more with less sometimes. And quite frankly, I think we're in a good position. Hopefully, next year isn't as difficult. But I would ask my colleagues to support and to approve this unanimously because it is a fair deal for our students and taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else, Mr. DeCaro?
I think it's a, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a great presentation. And again, I also like, Mr. Dunn, I'd like to thank you and Dr. Hoker and Mr. Sodino for putting it together. The one, can you just, Mr. Mayor, just, I saw that there was an increase in the extraordinary aid. Can you just explain for the public what that is used for? Just to be, you know, just to clarify what the extraordinary aid goes for. I know you brushed on it, but can you just say it again?
Sure. What extraordinary aid is, it relates to special needs students. And what the state has done is, if, just using an average number, if we spend above $50,000 for a particular student to provide them the education that they need and the services that we require, they will reimburse us for a portion above $50,000. The one piece that they omit from that calculation is the transportation cost. So the district has to absorb the transportation cost. So in the past, we've never known what that sharing arrangement would be. But so anything above $50,000, so if a child cost us $80,000 or $120,000, they would give us a portion of that amount above the $50,000 to the $120,000. And it was never guaranteed before, and it's not guaranteed now. However, after the S2 legislation was passed last year, they did pass other legislation that that raised that percentage so that we did get an increase in our extraordinary aid. And that's why they're telling us to budget more than we did in prior years. So it's for the special ed students, their education, and whatever services they require.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kelly, I just want to add something, please.
Yes.
Just as my colleagues have said, Mr. Sodino, Dr. Hoker, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your hard work and diligence in putting this budget together. Obviously, it's a difficult time for everybody, and I think you just did a tremendous job in keeping things as normal as possible with minimal effect to everybody included. Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Either raise your hand or just unmute yourself.
Just also thank you to CJ and Joanne, too. I know that they had a lot of, they helped out a lot with it as well. I don't want to leave them out.
Kelly, I would just summarize as this is, you know, this is one of those times when in historical perspective, it's called the Hobson's Choice, when you only have one choice. The legislation tells us it's a 2% increase, and that is our choice. It's like ordering from column A or column A. And this is what we have. So I want to thank everyone for their participation in it. But being an S2 district and under the direction of the state, we are at 2%, and that is our choice. The only choice. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, then if there's no other comments, you know, I don't know if there's much more to say. But I appreciate Mr. Sodino's optimism that our number from the state is what it is. I hope it stays that. I am concerned that it won't and that, once again, we'll be hit with another surprise. But I think this budget is solid. It is certainly continuing the education that our students deserve. Hopefully, we'll all be back and have some sense of normalcy when we come in in the fall. But again, I thank the whole staff for everything, Mr. Mayor, your whole staff, CJ, Joanne, you know, everyone who works hard on this to get it out. So with that, could I have a motion to, for the resolution to adopt the 2021 school year budget?
I'll motion.
Okay, I heard Burns and then DeCaro.
Okay, so Burns is first, DeCaro is second.
We'll go alphabetical.
Okay, so roll call. Burns?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Suprema?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
The 2020, 2021 budget passes, and I personally thank all of you for supporting the budget. And I'm sure the rest of the administrative team also does.
Okay, we got to the second item. Can I have a motion for supplies, equipment, services, number one?
Dunn will make a motion.
Glenn, second.
Okay, so before we start. Okay, so before we start discussion, I'm going to actually turn it over and ask Dr. Hoker if she could provide us a little bit more information on this specific item. I know there are some questions out there.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify a few things that I know are out there. First off of all, all current substitutes employed in Old Bridge would have the opportunity to, to Kelly Services, should this be voted on and approved, would be able to move over to Kelly Services without interview based on recommendation from my department. All substitutes would receive the same daily rate as currently employed substitutes in Old Bridge. They would be eligible for unemployment during the summer months. They would also be eligible for healthcare benefits through Kelly Services. And when accessing jobs, the system will remain exactly the same. Kelly Services will access our current frontline absence management system, the same as our substitutes do now. They would select jobs. Our Old Bridge staff will request coverage in the same way that they do now, putting their absence in frontline formerly ASOP, and substitutes being able to go in, same email, contact information, everything will transfer, would transfer over directly into our, sorry, Kelly Services system. In addition, the Kelly Services would provide a team and coordinator responsible for the staffing needs, meeting and greeting subs, obtaining feedback from substitutes, making sure that when they do come into the district, that they have what they need. They would be working directly with the principals to manage the building needs. Preferences would be met. Principals would have the opportunity to select particular substitute. Staff members, same as they do now, are able to select particular substitutes. Building substitutes would be assigned based on need. And again, principals would have the opportunity to be involved in that, managing, recruiting, hiring, with input from our Old Bridge team, would all take place through Kelly Services. And they would coordinate benefits, sick time, payroll, fingerprinting, certifications, and all of the things that go along with the process of hiring a staff member. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that when we hire a substitute, we go through the same process that when we hire a permanent employee. The fingerprinting, the background checks, the don't pass the trash, all the things, all of these things have to be maintained for every substitute, only it's often temporary. In a year where we've increased our pool to approximately 300, we may have had to hire 200 substitutes. Because as many as we're hiring, half that many are leaving at the same time, because they are, many of our substitutes are looking for permanent employment. It becomes a constant process that we have to go through. Kelly Services will efficiently manage the unfunded mandates placed upon the school district, including the management and tracking of sick time eligibility. The district will continue to have a say and oversight into every staff member that is placed into our buildings. Old Bridge will continue to recruit and hire our long-term substitute placements, and will only source these postings through Kelly Services if we are unsuccessful in finding a candidate. So as of now, moving to Kelly Services, between now and June, all of our current substitutes would have the opportunity to move over and would be set up, same as they are, in the frontline system to be able to take positions in September. Our staff would be able to request positions, same as they do right now. We would have preference for particular subs in particular places based on teacher and principal input, and we would have oversight into every staff member that walks into our building. And our substitute will receive the same pay that they are receiving right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hoker. So what we'll do now is we will open it up to the public. So if there's any questions or comments, please put those in the chat, and we will get any of the questions that you still might have answered. So just wait a second to give people time if there's anything they want to put in. Okay, we do have, we have a question. And this is from Mr. O'Neil, who's from the ROBEA. Using an outside service for substitutes was considered and roundly rejected by the Board of Ed a few years ago. How is this different?
Can I address that? I'll just, you know, the, I guess the impetus of where we're at with this decision is not something we were even looking to address. But again, there are impacts that come out of decisions, governmental decisions in Trenton that have unintended consequences. So this is, again, something pushed upon the districts as an unfunded mandate that substitutes, under the current, right, under the current government legislation, are afforded sick time, but you have to track that. So maybe, Mr. Parton, if I'm incorrect, or Mr. Mayor, I believe, how many hours are they, do they acquire until they get a sick day?
Every 30 hours, they accrue one hour of sick time.
So to Joe's point, Dave, it's worse, the answer is immediately more complicated. They don't get a sick day, they get a sick hour, and then they'll get another sick hour, and then it aggregates out and is necessarily tracked.
If everyone, who's listening at home, could just imagine the immense accountability and tracking that has to do, for every 30 hours, you have to be, afford someone a hour of sick time. And we don't work one-hour days, and we don't have one-hour shifts within our schools. So either you're going to take a half-day or a full day, a full day, a sick day, and someone has to track all of that. And while I want everyone to be able to take sick time when there's, then, when it's afforded them, in the past, and to Mr. O'Neil's point, substitutes have always been at-will employees. They're not under contract to have to come in. They come in when it's available to them, when it's, when it works for them, when they want to work. To track that's, to say that I was going to come to work tomorrow, but I'm not going to come to work tomorrow, I feel sick, I want to take sick time for a job that you're not even contracted to work. It would, it is a monumental task to manage that, and it's one of the things that will be done by Kelly Services for us. Otherwise, we would have to bring someone in from the outside to monitor and track all that.
I would like to just add, because this question came up today, and someone asked, well, why can't we track the same way that we do our staff? And our staff are entitled to, our 10-month employees are entitled to 10 sick days, which they get on September 1st. And we do track their, I'm sorry?
I'm just agreeing with, that's a much simpler process. You get 10 days.
And that's what I want to explain, that they get their dates upfront, and they're entitled to use them. And yes, when they're absent, we track them and we deduct that time, but we are not, it's, there's no system in place to track substitutes and count hours. And every month, we're looking at different substitutes, because as I said earlier, we're hiring and people are leaving every month. If you go back through agendas, you can see we're putting people on, they're leaving, they're getting permanent employment, or they're taking, you know, jobs elsewhere. And it's a more transient population, which makes it more complicated to track. In addition to that, the don't pass the trash law came into effect. And every employee that we hire, we have to go back and contact employees for the last 20 years. 20 years. So we have to track that. Now we have to track that for substitutes as well, and every single employee in the district. So this has become more, it's, it's, it would be more efficient for the outside agency to manage.
There's another question in that's similar from Mr. Haywood that says, I did not hear the entire conversation. Did you mention the reason for the decision to pursue this? Which I believe that was, that came in before Dr. Hoker, Mr. Sedino answered. So I believe that was answered. If there's any more clarification, please just put it in chat. If there's any other questions regarding, regarding this item. Oh, wait, just, just another minute, because I know sometimes it takes a minute to type in a question. So, so we'll wait just one more minute before, before we'll move on. So then, if there's any last questions from the public on, on the item, or the RFP. Okay. I do not see any other, any other items coming in from the public. So I'm going to then, at this time, close the public comment on item one. Any comment, questions from the board on this?
No, I mean, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate everyone, you know, a lot of, you know, I had been getting some, people were reaching out to me and with obvious concern, just because they didn't really know what the, what was involved and what was going on. So hopefully, those people did tune in and were listening to Dr. Hoker's explanation of how everything was going, and hopefully, they don't have any more questions. If they do, you know, again, they can reach out, you know, and hopefully, someone can clarify any small, specific question that they might have. But hopefully, I think Dr. Hoker gave a great explanation and made everything very clear. So hopefully, everybody's fears and concerns were cleared up.
Madam President, Rich Dunn?
Mr. Dunn, yeah.
So there is something that's missed here, and it needs to be clarified that this district, and I know that Dr. Hoker worked very tirelessly to try to keep the substitute pool fresh with new possibilities and new employees. However, over the last year or so, the pool has dwindled. And what would happen is we wouldn't have enough personnel substitute-wise to fill the classrooms when there's teachers that are out. So we were covering probably 60 to 70% of the classes during a given day, and that's unfair to our students, and also unfair to our educators, who would lose their prep time and things of that nature. So we had to do something a little different. We had to look outside the box and find a solution that would best suit, you know, our needs. And unfortunately, the pool of substitutes applying for temporary work within Old Bridge was not working. So Dr. Hoker and administration worked tirelessly. They found options for us to look at and explore. And unfortunately, or fortunately, we have to go with this at this point. And it's not forever, you know, it could be changed, and we can go back to the original solution if necessary. But you know what? We need to do something, because it's unfair to our students who wouldn't have a substitute teacher. They would have to be jockeyed or covered by other people, or, you know, teachers would lose their prep. So all in all, I think this is the right solution at this time, and hopefully, it will work for the betterment of our district.
Ms. Callie, did you want to?
Yeah, I did, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, I did have a question. A couple of people reached out to me from the public late this afternoon. How, what's the length of the contract?
One year.
Okay, that's pretty much what I thought. I, I agree with Mr. Dunn, and I applaud Dr. Hoker's efforts to avoid this in the past several years. But unfortunately, I mean, in addition to what Mr. Dunn said about are not having total coverage during the day, I think that the final push for this for us was, you know, as usual, government mandates things and leaves us holding the ball. And, you know, when Dr. Hoker and Mr. Sedino mentioned, it's a government mandate, but it's an unfunded mandate. So, you know, do this, we're creating more work for you. You're probably going to have to hire staff in order to meet the requirements of this government mandate. But we're not going to give you any money for it, and by the way, we're still going to cut your, your state aid by millions of dollars. So, you know, it is unfortunate that we, you know, have to make this particular decision at this time. But again, I applaud our administration for their efforts in this. And I think we've addressed, I know through the questions that were up here, and, and that last question about the term of the contract, I think, at least for me, all the questions that I've received from the public have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board? No? Okay, so I, and again, I thank Dr. Hoker, because I think at the end of the day, that we do get to keep those people who are substitutes in our district, who, you know, are part of the school. And so I think that's a key thing about this. So if there's no other comments, we did have a motion in a second. So, Mr. Mayor, if we could have roll call, please.
Burns?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay. And we will, we're done with the action items, and so we will actually open up the, to the hearing of the residents one more time on any district item, issue, comment, concern. So again, I'll give a few minutes if anybody wants to type anything into the chat, because I know it will take a minute, so we'll wait one second. Ah, okay, again, Mr. O'Neil, oh, okay, there we go. Last one. "In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to thank all the teachers of Old Bridge for what they do every day, but especially in the manner in which they have risen to meet the obstacles presented by our current situation. Thank you to every educator who works or lives in Old Bridge." And thank you, Mr. O'Neil and everyone. So I think we can all concur to that. So, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Again, I'll give it just one more moment for that before we wrap up for this evening, the public portion. Okay, I do not see any other comments from the public. So before we adjourn to go into an executive session, is there anybody from the board? Any comments before we close out?
Just congratulations, congratulations. Just thank you to the teachers, also piggybacking on Tim. Thank you. I don't know why I want to keep saying congratulations. Thank you to the, all the teachers and staff and administrators and everything for what you've done and how you've all, you know, we're just one Old Bridge, and I'm just so very proud to be part of this district. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Callie?
I think I know why you wanted to keep saying congratulations, because what everybody that is working for this district is dealing with, you are appreciated. You're appreciated every day and every year for your efforts on behalf of our children. But I, I don't think it was wrong to say congratulations, because I think you should all be congratulated for working under these, you know, extraordinary circumstances. And I can't wait until the day we can stop using that term extraordinary or unprecedented circumstances. But again, from, from my heart, I am proud of this district and everything that you always accomplish, and tenfold, at least tenfold, maybe 100-fold more proud recently. Thank you all.
Madam President, I just want to say something real quick. I know I had some FaceTime and VoiceTime in the last hour or so, but I just want to say that I'm very proud of everyone, these unprecedented times. These unprecedented times are very difficult. And our teachers have risen to the occasion, they're thinking out of the box. They're providing an education virtually, which is just unbelievable, and it's very effective. Like, you don't hear good things from parents that they're very proud. And I hear also that students are enjoying the virtual learning environment, and it's making them use technology more, which is very important. And, you know, it's not only the teachers, the administrators, it's everyone who is doing something very special during these very trying times. Bus drivers are doing an incredible job with delivering meals and making sure they're delivering laptops and computers to kids who need them. But, you know, I did get some information that there's some of our administrators who do roll their sleeves up at 7:00 in the morning and load buses with food. So I know who he is. I'm not going to embarrass him. But thank you, because you know what? You want to talk of the town when people see you rolling your sleeves up at 7:00 in the morning, loading buses with food. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And you know what? I love Old Bridge, and whatever we have to do together, we'll do it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Burns?
I just wanted to reiterate what everyone else said. Thank you, teachers. Happy appreciation, Teacher Week. And, you know, we're just going to keep doing what we're doing and hopefully get through this and be together in September.
Thank you. Anyone? Mr. Sittadino, I see your finger. Yes?
Yeah, just a totally different topic. Just inform that since we've kind of hit our, our peak days with COVID-19 in Old Bridge, today is the lowest day of reporting. I'll let the township report the number, but today is our lowest day reported of new COVID cases. So that means that something we're doing very well as a community is, you know, staying away from each other, practicing that social distancing and being responsible in our behaviors. And everyone, when we collectively do that, we'll get back together sooner rather than later. So thank you, everybody in Old Bridge, and stay healthy and stay strong.
Okay, anyone else then? All right, so again, I will reiterate to all of our teachers and staff, especially our teachers, maybe we'll have a month of appreciation after this. I think many people gained a new appreciation for what you do every day. The kids for hanging in there, the parents for your resiliency. I love, you know, seeing all these videos that everybody is sharing. So it's great to see each other that way, at least. So again, thank you, everyone. Reminder, this is just the budget meeting. We have our regular agenda meeting next Tuesday. So we'll be back on Zoom, unfortunately, but, you know, maybe not too much longer. Now, I'm going to turn it over. We have to adjourn, but we're not going into an executive session at this point. Mr. Parton, do you want to just clarify?
Yes, because we have several board members who are conflicted. There is an executive session planned for discussions having to do with the superintendent evaluation process. But we do not have a quorum of non-conflicted board members. So we're going to continue with an informal discussion, but the board meeting will adjourn. And those of you who are able to participate, please don't hang up, because we'll keep talking.
All right, then, can we have a motion for, and we will not be coming back. So can we have an emotion? Is this now just a motion to adjourn?
Yes, correct.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Lent will make the motion.
Right, and can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Sure, Dunn. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Mauer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.